Yes, sir. Anyone hear me?
Yes.
Can anyone hear Marco?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and keep everybody muted so that we don't have background noise. Just so you know, star six to unmute if you need to talk.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Mayor.
I can't hear you.
Hold on.
Rusty, go ahead and unmute and see.
Can you hear me now, Phil? No? On the top of your...
Try there.
Can you hear me now, Phil?
Nothing. I can't. It's... I'm muted. Let me... How's that?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Now I can. Okay. Somehow or other, my voice got turned way down. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Good evening and welcome to today's meeting. Today is Monday, February the 22nd, 2021. The time is now 3:00 PM. Special meeting for the city of Trinidad will now come to order. This is a Zoom meeting. So could I have a roll call, please?
Tabana?
Here.
Pedo?
Here.
Priego? Priego?
Mollotree?
Mollotree?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here. Well, I said welcome. Nice meeting. And we have one item for the special meeting. Consideration of potential Monument Lake Resort lessee and directing staff to negotiate the lease agreement. On February the 18th, we interviewed three different companies. Marco, who was represented by Ronald and Andrea Marco. Buckhorn Ridge Outfitters LLC, represented by Brett McGraw. And Wander, represented by Matt Hessler and Andrew Sticetti, I think is how you pronounce last name. Could... Anyone that's there, could you please mute? Need everyone to mute, please. So item one, like I said, is consideration potential Monument Lake lessee and directing staff to negotiate the lease agreement. Counsel, does I need a motion from counsel?
So I make a motion to nominate Buckhorn as the new lesee for Monument Lake.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Do not call a vote, please.
Tabana?
Yes, yes.
Pedo?
Yes.
Priego?
Yes.
Mollotree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Motion to adjourn in the special meeting?
It's all moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, call a roll?
Tabana?
Yes.
Pedo?
Yes.
Priego?
Yes.
Mollotree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Okay, now we're on to the work session, the housing forum. And some protocol for the... Protocol for the this meeting. Like I said, I'd like everyone to make sure when you're not speaking to please mute. There is a chat line that's available to anyone who wants to chat in a question. The chat questions will be taken at the end of the meeting where it has the... Where it says open discussion, public comment. And Ms. Audra Kerr will be fielding those questions and bringing them up or referring them to someone that can answer the questions. And during that time, we will also just allow for that open discussion, five minutes, for anyone who wants to speak during that time. However, we do have quite a few people that are going to be speaking prior to the open... The open public comment that will be able to take longer if necessary. The reason for today's meeting is to just to get an understanding of the current home and rentals issue that we have here in Trinidad. And also to maybe to begin to explore maybe some future needs that we might... That we're probably going to be needing in the near future. Also, what resources are available to help the developers from the state and probably the federal levels? And maybe to find out maybe what is affordable levels, affordable housing in this day and age? The cost of home building has gone up quite a bit. And just to kind of get an understanding there. And also, the final item is going to be more than likely, tonight is not going to be the one and only meeting. We will probably need one or two, maybe more meetings to have some additional comment from the public. And at this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn this meeting over to city manager, Mr. Mike Valentine, and he's going to lead us through the process from his end. Mr. Valentine?
You're muted, Mike. Sorry. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I've got two devices going, my computer and my phone, and both of them are muted. That's impossible. But anyway. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and everyone, welcome. As I can see by the number of participants, there's a lot of interest in this topic. And we have been inundated by people who want to, you know, present, who want to talk. So like the mayor said, we're definitely going to... This is just going to kick off this discussion. And I anticipate more work sessions. And I encourage developers and builders to come in. Part of the reason for the discussion is we know that, you know, there's been a crunch coming on housing and it's all exciting. But we haven't had quite the interest coming into City Hall that we thought we would, you know, asking about opportunities and what can be done. I've heard a lot of... I'll just call it rhetoric that we don't want any outside developers, that we only want to work with certain developers. That is by no means the case. We want to invite everyone, especially in this exciting time that we're going through. So with that being said, we put together this kind of a group to kind of give you an idea, you being city council, the county commissioners, the developers, everyone on the call, some ideas on the opportunities that are out there, our state offices and such. And so I'll just, you know, we've got New Elk Mine on the call. They're going to present a little bit on what they have going on. They are part of this newly energized market that we have, but they are not all of it. So we want to just hear from them. But again, there's more to come. We've got local realtors that we hopefully present. They've sent in information. I've got information from the Housing Authority. And then we have Caroline Tranny on from Colorado Housing and Finance. We have Melissa Neerson on from the Department of Local Affairs, the Division of Housing. We have Mike Landis, who's going to present from the Office of Economic Development and International Trade regarding opportunity zones. And Andrew Wallace, same office of OEDIT for enterprise zones. And then we have TSGC on the line, too, talking about their new building trains program. That would be toward some workforce for contractors and such. So again, welcome, everyone. So we can kick it off with Mr. Gray from New Elk Mine. Audra, if you would share screen with Mr. Gray?
For bigger view.
There we go. Mr. Gray, are you able to share your screen?
Yeah, yeah, I did have it. Mike, I did have it here.
That's some pretty flowers. I think that's Audra's, not yours.
Yeah, no. Audra, do you want to... Sorry, Audra, I thought you were going to... I said, I'm happy to share. I just need to get back into my files to do so. Can you just, if you wouldn't mind, just stop sharing now and then I'll... That's it. Thank you. And I'll just... It was just blocking access to my files. And I'll just open up the presentation. It will take me 10 seconds to do so. Okay, Audra, do you want to... Yep. Okay. All right. Okay, Mike, can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Mike, thank you, Mayor Rico, councillors and members of the public who are on this Zoom call or otherwise calling in. This is a short, just a very short presentation. Councillors have a longer version of this. It's a cut-down version, just to give people on the call a sense of timing with the restart of the mine and what, you know, what our production looks like. And most importantly, what our labor requirements look like as well. So really quickly, by way of introduction, Allegiance Coal is an Australian public listed company. We're listed on the Australian Securities Exchange. I'm mandated by my shareholders and my board to invest in steelmaking coal mines in North America for the purposes of supplying the product to the global seaborne market. So we're here to supply, you know, to the international market, not domestically in the US. We have two projects. We recently completed the acquisition of the New Elk Mine, which you're all very familiar with. And we have another project in Northern British Columbia, which is where I live. The leadership team, and these are names which will become familiar to you all over the course of time. And the founder, chairman and CEO of the company, Larry Cook, is based in Charleston, West Virginia. He is a director of the current company, an extremely experienced around coal mining engineer. Aiman Mahan is the chief operating officer, resident now in Trinidad, and he is at the mine permanently. Rex Foit is the general manager of production. Rex also hails from the East Coast. And Louis Head, who is our general manager for non-production activities. So those are probably the five most important names that you will come across in the course of time. Okay, moving on. So just a really quick one-on-one. I'm always surprised by how many people don't appreciate the difference between thermal coal, which generates electricity, and coking coal, which is used for blast furnace steel production. Coking coal along with iron ore are the two most fundamental components into the production of blast furnace steel. And many of you will know that the Elan Mine produced for 30 years, supplying coking coal to the Blast Furnace in Pueblo and also to a blast furnace in California at the time. So we are very much focused on coking coal. And New Elk is very much a coking coal mine. Steel, of course, is critical, you know, supply. It's delivered in coils, plates, and sections, and bars. It's refined for its multiple applications globally. And that ranges from wind power. One milliwatt capacity of wind turbine requires 230 tons of steelmaking coal. Solar panels, Tesla, the chip cloud, all of that is derived from coking coal. The mine itself, as you know, as I mentioned, the mine operated for 30 years from 1951 to 1980, supplied 30 million tons of coking coal to the Pueblo Stereomall. A Toronto, Canadian-based company tried to restart the mine in 2011, but failed miserably due fundamentally to poor planning and poor execution. Okay. This is just a high-level view of where our target market is. Probably most of you will not really appreciate the 70% or slightly less than 70% of global steel demand is generated out of the Asian region. The markets of Europe and South America, traditional markets for US producers, you know, represent probably combined less than 20%. I mean, access to this Asian market is very important. And the New Elk Mine, unlike most US coking coal mines, which are on the east coast of the US, central, northern, southern Appalachia, New Elk being located more centrally does have access to the west coast as well. Right, so what are we looking at, timing-wise? And, you know, what are our staffing requirements look like? First thing to appreciate is that the New Elk asset and the neighboring Lorenzido property, which we also acquired, is very large. It's 750 million tons of coal resource for a potential mine life of greater than 50 years, assuming the demand for blast furnace steel continues, and we have no reason to believe otherwise. Very low cash cost operator. And as a consequence, can withstand price volatility. And therefore, you know, as prices go up and they come down, which is what happens in the commodity markets, this mine should stay in production because it's low cost and can withstand that volatility. Margins may squeeze as prices come down, but when prices increase, then your margins improve. Okay, so we're planning a production start date in May, some three months ago, so it's very imminent. We've staged the startup. It'll be gradual. We're not trying to get to, you know, two and a half, three million tons per annum, you know, in the first six months. We're staging it over about a three-year period. And I guess, you know, three reasons for that. The first one is that we cannot inundate local community, you know, with a massive workforce arriving on the doorstep in three months. So, you know, being able to accommodate the workforce, wherever they may come from, you know, is something that needs to be staged as well and planned as well. Secondly, we need to put the rail back in. The rail from BNSF's main track, just south of the city of Trinidad, up the Purgatory Valley, all the way back to the mine. And that'll take us a couple of years as well. So it'll be... It's staged over the next two to three years. So on startup in May, we'll have a workforce of slightly less than 50, producing around about 35,000 metric tons per month. That is coming from what we call one production unit of equipment. Then in November, we double. We put on a second production unit of equipment. And our production doubles, and so does our workforce. Perhaps maybe about 90, again, slightly less than 100. And then we're steady-state at 70,000 tons per month until mid-'22, sort of late-'22. That's when we have the rail. We will have the rail back in all the way to the mine. And then we go, once again, we go through two periods of stepping up or ramping up production, arriving by late-'22 at 140,000 tons per month, by which time we will, you know, reach something in the order of 200 full-time employees. So this is going to take place over the course of the next, you know, two and a half years. Beyond that, there's no reason why we cannot increase production further. And I have every intention of doing so. But, you know, we've done no mine planning for that yet, and that's just something which we will consider going forward. So I think for the purposes of this meeting, getting a sense of the staffing requirement, you know, highlighted in this slide, is probably most relevant. I just got to make one caveat, and that is that none of these numbers take into account contractor labor force. These are typically your specialist trade skills, which are not required full-time, but are required within the facility. And that number is usually about 50% of your direct employees. All right. Okay, I think that's really all I have to say. And I hand it back to you, Mike. Thank you.
I need to be making sure Aaron's teaching.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. I appreciate that. Just a reminder for anybody who joins, please make sure you're muted. We're getting some background noise. But thanks, Mark Gray and New Elk, for that presentation. It just kind of gives you an idea of what they are looking at. And like I said, it is just one facet of everything that is happening in our area. So with that, we also contacted realtors. We contacted Town and Country, One Premier Properties, Southern Colorado Realty, Colorado Land Properties, Bachman and Associates, TLC Realty. Hopefully, we didn't miss anybody, but those were the ones that were actually licensed with the city of Trinidad. They did give us some information and a few, I believe, wanted to present. So if we can start with Ed Traumer from Town and Country. He sent over some statistics. But Ed, if you want to...
Hey, Mike. May I... This Allegiance Coal, in previous meetings that we've had with them, one of the things that he showed that there would be about 50 employees to start with and ramping up from there. The majority of those employees would have to be brought in. There may be a few local miners that will start. So that, and compared... Well, to talk about the housing industry, that's going to impact our housing because a lot of these people we brought in will need housing. So that was pretty much the reason why he was brought into this meeting and this forum today.
Okay. Thank you. Ed?
Thanks, Audra and Mike, for inviting me to participate in today's forum. And I'd say hello to Mayor Rico and other members of city council and city staff and all the participants. Mike mentioned I'm Ed Traumer. I've been a real estate broker in the Trinidad market for 26 years. I have owned Town and Country Estate Realty for the past 20 years, and I recently merged with Co to the West. So I'm no longer a business owner. I'm still in the market. I'm still selling real estate as an associate broker. But just to clarify that, Mike, Town and Country is no longer on the business. We're Co to the West now, so. I... Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, I just... I've kept some records over the past 14 years of sales transactions. And I've done that in four different categories. And those were in residential, in lots and acreages, farm and ranch, and commercial properties. And that, all these numbers are based on records in our Spanish Peaks MLS. And it doesn't include, you know, private transactions between private parties or other brokers who may not be members of our MLS. But I thought the information was maybe relevant to the meeting today and that people might find that it is useful in seeing the dynamic of our marketplace right now. I'm hoping everybody received a copy of the information I had sent forward. I didn't have a formal presentation. I put just together kind of quickly. But I... If you do, I just want to point out that the two most relevant categories for discussion regarding today's meeting is probably residential sales and lots and acreage sales. And if you look at our sales records in 2005 and 2006, you can see that they're rather robust. We had 218 to 216 sales in 2005, 2006. And our total sales value was $37 million and $34 million, respectively. And if you look up to 2018, 2020, we've got 240, 209, 241. So the activity in '05 and '06 wasn't that much less than the total transactions we're seeing today. The dollar volumes are quite a ways up, but the numbers aren't. And if you... Those of you who have been there for a long time, you will probably remember, in 2005 or 2006, we had a significant amount of economic activity going on in our community. And this reflected in this pricing. We had Lawrence Construction was in here doing the I-25 Overpass project. We had La Quinta coming out of the ground. We had Holiday Inn coming out of the ground. We had the Tole Tech under construction. So I think, I remember giving a speech to Kiwanis back in those days. I think it was like $37 million of construction going on in our marketplace. So that's reflected very much in those 2005 and 2006 numbers. And those were significant increases. I don't have all the history from prior, but I do know I can tell you that when I came into this market in 1994, came into this market in 1994, there was only one house on the market above $100,000. Everything was priced below $100,000. So, as you, as we follow down that chart, you can see that in 2000, beginning in 2007, we started to see a decline in our marketplace. And we see how it bottoms out in 2009, 2010. And again, those of you who are locally may remember that in 2008, this was actually nationally, we had a burst of the, of the real estate market, and so we had a large amount of inventory come on the marketplace. And that, of course, impacted our market also. And plus that, we had changed the oil and gas commission at that time, and they started to issue more, fewer permits for gas well drilling, and so there was a significant decrease in our workforce at that time. And, you know, Pioneer had 500 employees, they went to 100. Halliburton was in town with 227 employees, and they disappeared. So, that was a significant drop in workforce, and more houses come on the market, and therefore, you can see we had as many as 95 sales in 2009, which is a significant drop in, in sales activities. So, then in 2011, 12, we start to see, again, we start to see an increase in that, in that marketplace. And if you look at, you know, what happened, say, 2014, 2015. Well, 2014, marijuana retail sales for recreational purposes became legal in the state of Colorado. So, we had a high demand for, we start to see an increase in demand for housing. We also, in 2015, the governor announced the Trade for Space Program, and Trinidad was, was designated as one of the, the city for the pilot program for, for that project. And so, we start to see how that impacted the market in those years. We also had La Puerta coming out of the ground back in then, and so there's a lot of activity, a lot of money being spent again. And so now, we're starting to see our market drive up again. And then, if you want to take a quick look down to commercial, you can see what happened with the commercial real estate in 2014. Again, you know, the driver there was marijuana legalization, and we had very few commercial sales up from 2007 through, through 2013. Now, we have 16 sales, $3 million in '14, '15, '21. That's when the pilot program for Space to Trade was, was announced. And so now, we have a lot of interest from people coming in from Denver, and you can see the growth that's happened and how we've sustained our interest in, in commercial properties throughout the years. And so, with the, those three, three projects have really driven our, our economy here and our interest in housing for a number of years now. So, if we go back to the spring of, we go back to the residential numbers again, and go back up, look at 2020, I just want to talk a minute about this market. So, in 2020, you can see we had a significant increase in sales volume at $53 million. And that was up $13 million, $15 million over the previous two years. Well, so these sales transactions numbers are basically flat, 238, 240. We had a decline of 209, and then an upswing of 241. And so, but yet, in 2020, we had an increase in the average sale of the price of a home from 181 to 220. That's $40,000. Well, that number, in my opinion, reflects the lack of lower-priced inventory that we had in the market, and, and an increase in the sales of upper, upper-end properties. So, that $53 million, we saw a real change in our market from, again, a decline of lower-priced, modest-priced homes, up to where we had much higher sales in the, in the upper end of our market. And then in, in 2019, that number, you know, 209, $37 million, $181,000 average price, in that year, really what we saw was we had a reduction in, again, modest-priced housing, but we, and we didn't see as much interest in higher-end properties. The higher-end property sales last year really drove, drove this marketplace. So, I'll just take a minute and go back down and look at the land sales, lots and acreage sales. If you go down to the 2010, 11, 12, 13, 14 timeframe, look at the number of lots we sold, 26, 27, 24 lots. I mean, there was no interest at all in, in our marketplace for lots, because nobody was going to build, because you could buy a home so cheap, you couldn't afford to, to build one for what you could buy one. So, then what's happened, obviously, as you can see, is our lots, our lot sales went way up, and that's in conjunction with our average sale price and our number of transactions, because now our market, new, new home construction is now compatible, or even, even in some cases, could be cheaper than we see with retail, with, with sales of older homes. So, I just wanted to draw that analogy, that we're starting to see, what we would expect to see is where the market demand is going to drive the sale of lots and the increase in new home starts, which is what we're seeing. So, the next thing I want to talk about is where we're at a little bit today. These figures, I, I pulled these this morning, so they're pretty new. So, and Mike, since you, or whoever, since you've got that pulled up, you can't really see that too, that chart too well, but what I did here is I, I put up, the last six years, I just wanted people to see what the, what the new listings were, and you can see what, what we've had. And if you, this is 2019, 2020. Well, you can see in 2019, we had 200, and can't read that very well. I hope somebody can read that better. I think it's 200 and, 293 new listings in 2019. Well, in 2020, we had 235. That's a drop of 19%. Again, I think that represents some stability in the marketplace. It reflects an increase in price of homes, so we're probably going to see fewer people who are going to be able to afford a home or buy a home. And even though we have a large demand, people aren't ready to move right now, because the price of housing all over the country is high. And so, there's probably going to be some stability, which is going to, again, point to the fact that we really need to have some more new housing. And it's critical that we do that, given the demand. But going back to today, there's 28 homes for sale in Los Anamos County today. And of those 28 homes, there's only 13 of those that are in the city limits of Trinidad. So, that's definitely what you could define as the housing prices. There's two homes on the market under $100,000. There's one at 87.5 that's in the city limits, and one at 99 that's outside the city limits. And, well, the mayor may remember this, a few years ago, he had come to me and asked me to help him with some, 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 some numbers to help justify some, some funding from the Housing Authority for Trinidad. And at that point, about 45% of our sales were homes under $100,000. Today, we don't, we have two homes, and both of those are in, are in need of significant improvement. So, and then again, going back to our 28 homes on the market, after the two homes for 100,000, less than 100, the price jumps up to $152,000. There's only four homes on the market under $200,000. Not much of an inventory, four homes. And then if you get above the 300,000 mark, there's 13 homes on the market. So, you can see our market has, has, has went way up and gone high. And so, it's, it's quite a change in, in the market from what we're used to seeing just two, three years ago. So, as, as far as opportunity for home development, I just thought I would throw this out. The, now, we got two failed residential subdivisions, Cougar Canyon and, and River Rock. And so, both of those, I think, have potential for housing, obviously. There's, there's things that have to be done in both of them. I know that Cougar Canyon, I've, I've talked with Jim Leslie even today. He's the owner of the Canyon Home Subdivision, where there was 159 homes to be built there. I think there's only a total of 17 homes that have been built, and there's probably 10 lots that are available today. But there were a number of those, those lots there, where the soils have been engineered, and there's platforms for homes to be built. There's some infrastructure in the street. I'm talking to Mr. Leslie today and asking about his interest maybe in coming out and rethinking about building some homes there. Again, his comment to me was, the tax burden on those lots is so high, it makes it very expensive to do that. And so, Mike, I don't know if there's an opportunity for the city to use some marijuana money, or maybe to spearhead an economic development effort, get those taxing entities together, see if there's a way to write that debt down or forgive that debt, reduce that burden for those taxes out there. I mean, we spend thousands and thousands of dollars on economic development. This may be a, a way to do it sort of in reverse. We, we forgive debt, so we can have it, some additional housing, which is going to generate a lot more tax revenue sooner than just having that thing sit out there. I know that in River Rock, on Peak Street there, there's, there was about 25 homes planned there that, that we haven't seen built. I know there's sewer issues there, connecting that sewer before that, before they moved forward. And I, I know that, again, maybe there's some marijuana money or something that could help subsidize that, so we could get people to start to build homes there, help contractors do that. And then we've got, you know, to the north, here at North of North Avenue, we got Cityview Heights, there's quite a few lots for sale in there that are available for development. And then also, I always thought that if the city could ever extend utilities down Linden Street, north toward the fairgrounds, we've got that median collier subdivision out there that we haven't seen any development at. And that ground out there would be really inexpensive, at least initially. And I think that would provide an excellent location probably for some, some, some low, 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 uh, low-priced, modest-priced real estate, because the ground is so cheap. And that would also then act as a catalyst for possible development along that, that west side of I-25 between Fairgrounds and Exit 18. And I, I always thought that's been a very undeveloped area, and that might be an opportunity. So, with that, that's about what I have to say. We, we, we need more housing, and I appreciate the city taking an interest in, in getting everybody together here to see how we can solve this problem for our community. Thank you very much.
Hey, Ed, this is Phil Rico, and a question for you is, what would you say that the, because of our AMI that we have here in this area, what kind of housing market are we looking at that would be affordable to the local citizens and we're looking at? What would you say their price range should need, needs to be?
Well, you know, I, I would say, Phil, that the, we have hardly any inventory between 150 and 200,000. So, I mean, that, we need to have that price range to, to help a lot of people who locally have worked here, like people in the hospital I've worked with, you know, that's a price range where they're qualified at. And then about that, you know, you take, you take a workforce that makes the kind of money that the mine is going to be making, I think you're, you know, you're into the, you know, maybe the mid-2s, up to $300,000. So, you're going to need a lot of housing in that price range, I think, too. So, I think 150 up to 300 would be a good range. I think that it would help our market and provide housing for people in a local, a local look, and then people who are going to be moving in, who, who may, you know, make more money, like working at the, at the mine with Davis making wages and that kind of stuff. So, that would be my...
What about patio homes or condos for elderly people that want to, you know, sell their home and move into something that they don't have to take care of the exterior? Are you seeing any need for that?
Well, you know, we don't have much of an inventory to, to really make the comparison, but I would tell you that yes. I mean, it would be, it would be, if we had some senior living, where people didn't have to do a lot of maintenance, I think there's a lot of people who are living in these homes, the older people who are struggling maintaining those homes, who would move into those environments if they're affordable. They have to be affordable. And then those homes would come on the market, and they would fill some of the void for the single family, think, single families who need bigger homes. So, I, I do think that's, that would certainly be a, a need that could be fulfilled, even though I don't have statistically anything to prove it, it would just common sense would say that would be a, a thing to do.
Thank you, Ed.
Mayor, in the interest of time, we've got a lot more presentations. So, I would ask, there were several other realtors who sent in information. I'll call on you if you could be brief and, and not repeat any of the statistics, or if you have new ones, but we're trying to move this along. Doug Peterson from One Premier, the, would you like to present anything?
I would be very brief. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for inviting me. I'm, I'm the newest kid on the block here in Trinidad. I've been here about a year and a half. But formerly builder developer and a real estate broker for 29 years, I'm seeing some things, having moved out of the Vale Valley to come to Trinidad a year and a half ago. We had a real issue up there. I've seen it on the front range in Fort Collins, Windsor, Loveland, Boulder County, where I was building. I reiterate what Ed was saying, the, the price range between 150 to 300 would be the heart of the market. I certainly would also urge an opportunity for townhomes and condos that would be affordable, that possibly could free up some inventory. The, the long-term of development of, of homes doesn't happen overnight. As Ed said, there are a couple of subdivisions that could possibly relieve some of that pressure if the tax burden was not so high for folks to come in. So, I don't want to take much more time. Thank you, Mike. I'll defer to someone else.
I appreciate that. Southern Colorado Realty, Danielle Roel. Did you want to? If Danielle wants to speak, we'll, we'll come back to her. What about Gina Ray from Colorado Land Properties? I know both Danielle and Gina submitted letters. Gina? Or John?
Hi, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yes, I just submitted a letter in support of the statistics that Ed and everybody relayed in their letters, and also put a letter in on a few things that I think are important in, in looking at the future of housing. I didn't catch the income brackets that the new coal miners were going to be in, but Ed said that it was going to be in the probably 250 range. I would say that one of the problems we had was the, the last mining folks that came in enthusiastically was, yes, unfortunately, they had problems with planning at that mine, but a lot of younger miners came in without a real hefty credit stature. So, a lot of them needed rentals, and they needed long-term rentals. And I think so, the first thing that might need to be addressed in the rental market, if there's any help to be made there, is, is the... to be made there, is is the fact that those that criteria has changed for people that apply for rentals. I'm not a property manager, but I know that the clients I've had looking for rentals have had, you know, pretty pretty much the same criteria as almost buying a home to get a rental as well as the price increases. And so in my letter, I outline a few things. You know, our rental market is, we we have very little variety of rentals. I think the patio home idea is great, especially for people that aren't in a larger family. But I think that the rentals we have available where some of our younger population is is having to rent, has no outdoor space for them, has no balconies, even really, you know, as nice as the new art space rentals are, it's, I drive by and and I've heard clients say, gee, there's nowhere for me to be outside, really. So I think future planning could encourage some outdoor space living for people that are moving here for rentals. We have such a beautiful area. I think that one thing that wasn't noted was the outside brokers from Trinidad that are pressing our inventory as well. They sold a lot of, we worked with a lot of them, and we encouraged a lot of it originally for the outside brokers to come in. And the Denver brokers and other brokers in our area are so pressed for inventory themselves in northern Denver that they're they're really looking in our area, and now they're not finding it either. So they were a big part of the sales that occurred in 2020. Obviously, the realtors should be commended for the amount of money they spend in marketing for Trinidad. I think that there's a lot of things that have happened, the investors that have come in here, the Chamino and Dana Crawford and Kavon Crowd have certainly infused a lot of enthusiasm in our area, the new Fisher's Peak State Park, that was, that's a huge win in marketing. But now we have a lot of people that want homes. And let's go to the Mountain Home Arena, for instance. That price increase, we were able to sell homes that we hadn't been able to previously in a in a price range that that compensated the sellers for for the money they had put into the homes. And they were still able to sell for a lot less than a new build would have, would be today. And I think that I'm dealing with that right now with new builds. We have a few modular homes now at Cityview Heights, and they're, you know, coming in with a very low profit range, and that's, you know, a cost range for those builders to build. But the people that want those homes in the 1,200 square foot range, three bedrooms, two bath, modest, nice homes, are sometimes unable to qualify in that 220 range. They're still in the under the 200,000 range. And I would say, so it's very much dependent on what people are going to be able to make and their debt income ratio here. So and that, of course, is our largest crowd of buyers, you know, in any workforce. So that's something to consider. I would also say that in our 35 acre mountain arena, yes, there are some homes available under 300,000, very few, but in some of those 35 acre developments, they're unable to get water. So we're looking at the county properties dependent a lot on whether they can drill a well. The cost of drilling a water well has increased significantly, and our water tables have dropped in the county due to the fracking in our area. So, you know, a lot of times we were looking at wells that produce seven to 10 gallons a minute that now aren't producing at all. And from what I understand, the county doesn't own that many water rights, and there's been very little collaboration in order to get some water. If there could be, if there could be any development, especially that would benefit the mine more in the western area, there would need to be some collaboration in how do we supply water to that kind of development. And I know that's not a city issue, but it is something to consider in our area because we are such a large county. The other thing I would say is that I think that if there's going to be future development, you know, as a developer myself, took an awful long time to develop anything in Trinidad back in the late 90s and early 2000 timeframe, and it was very expensive for developers to come in and build the entire infrastructure themselves. So that's just a comment I have. I think we do have developments available, and I would hope that we could attract some builders that could build reasonably. I think one of the problems we've ran into with listings in Trinidad have been the little great grandmother houses that are on lot sizes less than 6,000 square feet. And I don't know when this law changed. I think it changed back in the early 2000 range, but it became, that's been a big thing, we're selling houses that are less than 6,000 square feet on the land traps, but if they burn down, they have to go through zoning, and they can't rebuild. So if a house isn't in good shape, they can't rebuild that house. So there's a lot of little lots like that, all located inside Trinidad, that could be built for a patio home or a smaller home that aren't being utilized. Those houses are just sitting there rotting because of their lot size. So those would be a few things that I think the master plan is going to be important here for us to finish that. I think open spaces in neighborhoods that could create their own little parks or or dog parks are important. And I would also say that, you know, just a projection of what we're planning on building Trinidad out to would be important for people to look at, investing their money in a development project. Thank you very much for having us today.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Several things that that were mentioned in there, I would encourage anybody to come in and talk to the city. A lot of things are being said out there, but none of the developers are coming in to talk to us. There's there's some ways to, you know, work with people to develop. So this is great conversation, and I want to move it along, but we still have, I'm not sure if anybody from Bachman and Associates wants to interject. Please keep it brief if you do.
Hi, I'm Sarah Manchell with Bachman. Can you hear me okay?
You can.
Oh, perfect, okay. Well, I don't have much to say. I mean, I certainly agree with Ed and Gina and all the statistics that have been brought forth and of course Doug as well. You know, I think one of the biggest challenges we've seen besides having low inventory is we're now seeing a lot of multiple offers happen on all price ranges of homes. And so that's going to be important to know for anyone new that's coming into town that needs the housing. We're going to have to supply more than than what the demand is right now, too. So just something to be aware of. I think development is is the way to go, but certainly I've heard that building is more expensive than buying homes that are already in place. So it would be important to find a developer that could bring quality homes or apartments or condos or townhomes that can keep the cost a little bit lower on their end as well as on the end for the consumer. Other than that, I just want to thank you guys for having us, and it's good to to hear that there's so many people interested, and hopefully we can all work together to make it happen.
Thank you. TLC Realty, is there anybody on for TLC that wants to chime in briefly?
Yeah, hey there, I'm Kevin McIntosh. I'll speak on Jared's behalf for TLC. I've been here for roughly four years selling real estate, also the president of MLS. Excuse me. I'm definitely going to back up Gina and Sarah and Ed on what their thoughts are. And something else, I mean, we're getting a lot of people, and I see due from COVID. We're seeing an increase in people that want to move here that before weren't not able to due to their jobs. And because of COVID, a lot of employers are seeing people are being productive, working from home. So we're getting influx of people that couldn't move here before that are able to now. And there's some certain infrastructure things as far as our internet capacity and ability that we don't have. We don't have high speed internet to the to the gigabyte level that, you know, with fiber optics that we know would potentially help. There have been deals lost over the last year or two because of the lack of of internet capability. Also, I would think that, you know, power is going to be an issue. I know we have an older power grid, and we started talking about developing a lot of new homes. That may be something that needs to be addressed as well. But, you know, again, with the COVID, we're getting, we had a lot of panic purchasing happening at the beginning of the year, a lot of people out of work. Then all of a sudden, we start seeing people that can't actually work from home, their employers are giving the go ahead to the lenders. So that's also generated, you know, a a demand for for new homes in the area as well. So won't take up any more time, but thank you again for the conversation. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We appreciate it.
Thank you. So as you can hear, we 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 definitely have, I don't know if it's it's crisis, but we have a shortage. Just briefly, I asked our building inspector today how many new bills we have had in over the last two and a half years. We've had nine within city limits, nine new building permits for a new residential. I also asked the the Housing Authority for some statistics, and I will, I will just read them here briefly to let you know where where they are at, and then we'll get into some of the presentations. So this is information from the Housing Authority as of February 19, 2021. So there are allotted 198 public housing units in their development, and as of today, they have five units that are unrentable due to the following. Two units need to be replaced due to demolition and remodeling. Four studio units were converted into two one bedroom compliant units. One three bedroom unit is offline, capital for modernization to a two bedroom unit. Two two bedroom units are offline, caused by an unfortunate accident over Christmas that displaced two families due to structural damage. Of the of the remaining 193 rentable units, three are currently vacant, one studio unit, one bedroom, one bedroom unit, and one three bedroom unit. Offline is how to prove vacancy does not get counted against the authority for days that it's vacant. The number of vacancies and days a unit sits vacant is counted against the authority and could affect funding. They have a current waitlist for studios that have four applicants. For one bedrooms, they have 62 applicants. For two bedrooms, they have 12 applicants. For three bedroom, they have seven applicants, and for four bedroom, they have one applicant. Of course, applicants must pass eligibility and suitability requirements to be housed. Three to five applications on average are processed to house one unit. From January 1, 2019 to current, we have experienced 70 total vacancies in public housing. And they have a housing choice voucher program, sometimes called Section 8. That program provides federally funded vouchers that recipients can use to help pay the rent on the units, and they find in the private housing market. We are allotted 83 vouchers. We currently serve 53 participants. For the calendar year of 2020, we averaged 56 vouchers and $532.26 was the average housing assistance payment. We currently have 46 applicants on the waitlist. At this time, we do not anticipate issuing any vouchers for the next couple of months. And then project based Section 8 new construction in the Corazon Square. Corazon Square is an elderly and or disabled 50 unit multifamily apartment complex. It is comprised of five two bedroom apartments and 45 one bedroom apartments. Utilities are included in rent. From January 1, 2019 to current, we have experienced 11 total vacancies. We currently have one vacancy and one applicant on our waitlist. Applicants must pass eligibility and suitability requirements to be housed, and three applications on average are processed to house one unit. So all that said, I think we should move into our presentation with state agencies to see what's available, what what, you know, financing is available and tax credits and all of the above. We have Caroline Tranny from CHAFRA, the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. She's a relationship manager for CHAFRA, Caroline. If you are there, please join us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And do I need to share? Thank you for the opportunity. Do I need to share my presentation or is that, Adra, are you sharing that?
Adra will share your screen, I believe.
Yes, if that if that will work for you, I'll let me share your screen.
Do you want me to share my? Okay.
Yes, please.
We do get one comment in the chat box, and I would say that if anybody has any comments, that's probably a good place to put them.
Okay, hopefully you can see my screen now.
Yes, yes.
Perfect. Well, good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to participate today. I am Caroline Tranny. I'm the Community Relationship Manager for the Southern Colorado Region for CHAFRA, the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. I'm based in Pueblo, but I have been serving the Southern Colorado Region for over 15 years now, so I'm very familiar with Los Angeles and Trinidad. And to help with my presentation today, I thought what I'd do is share some information again about CHAFRA to introduce those of you that are learning about CHAFRA for the first time, some of our program and services, including our focus on the housing continuum, and also our use of area medium income, which has been mentioned a little bit today already, and accessing allowable limits for our housing financing programs and the common types of data that we look at to help identify need. And also to just basically give an overall look in high level intro or refresher to some of you in affordable housing and some of the commonly used terms and definitions we use when accessing financing and program support for such housing needs that have been discussed today. So on the next slide, about CHAFRA. CHAFRA is actually is actually not a state agency, so we are a established as a separate, self sustaining, independent nonprofit. So we were established in 1973 by the Colorado General Assembly. Were you able to? Let me see. See my next slide? There we go. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we, again, were established in 1973 by the Colorado General Assembly. We are not, again, as the state agency, so we don't receive any direct appropriations or funding from the state. Again, we were self sustaining and operate as a local nonprofit for the state of Colorado. The state basically saw a need for a statewide housing authority, so that's how we basically came to fruition. And in addition to our own portfolio of programs and services we provide, we also contract with the state and other nonprofits throughout the state to offer affordable housing and business financing resources. So CHAFRA is governed, though, by a board of directors that is made up of 11 members. This includes a rep from the governor's cabinet as well as the legislative aide. And we also have a variety of statewide partners and stakeholders, including a local rep, Michelle Miles, who has been serving on our board of directors for the last couple of years. So in addition to the affordable housing finance programs that we operate for the state, we also received in 1982 authority to use some loan proceeds for economic development activities. So we also have a line of business financing and economic development programs. programs. To date, since nineteen seventy-three, we've invested approximately twenty-five billion dollars that have been raised and again invested in Colorado to date. In twenty twenty, we did three-point-six million dollars in affordable housing and business financing support. So our mission at CHAFRA, we strengthen Colorado by investing in affordable housing and community development, and then our vision is that everyone in Colorado will have the opportunity for housing stability and economic prosperity. And we basically do that through three lines of service, which include, first, in our homeownership programs. So we offer a variety of single-family affordable housing programs. Go into, if this might help. I just realized I wasn't in program mode, so I'll do that for you. I apologize, it's not going to let me scroll. Okay, can you still see my slides?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, again, our home, homeownership side, we have the single-family, which we provide a variety of mortgage loan programs, including first-time homebuyer assistance, down-payment assistance, and then homebuyer education. So we partner with a variety of local realtors, mortgage lenders, and we also contract with local nonprofits that are mission-aligned to help provide the homebuyer education classes in the local community. Currently, due to COVID, these classes are online and free for anyone who's looking to take those classes. We do partner in a lot of communities, including Trinidad, with the library when open or as available, to be able to access computers for individuals who would need the Wi-Fi or technical support to be able to access those classes online. Now, on our rental housing side, we have multifamily finance programs. Again, I'll talk on each of those here very shortly. And then we also serve as the administrator for the state of Colorado for the federal and state housing tax credit allocations that are allocated to the state of Colorado. And then, again, the business lending side, we provide a variety of access to capital for businesses to help them grow their business and support local jobs. This is through our credit enhancement programs. We have a cash collateral support program for partnering commercial lenders to help them mitigate their loan risk, as well as we do some direct loan programs to small businesses, primarily permanent loans for owner-occupied real estate loan and equipment financing by referral from local lenders, or in some cases, like our rural areas where there isn't a local lender, we can help provide that support as needed. And so CHAFRA also partners with other, as I mentioned, state and local nonprofits to help administer some of their funding programs. This includes, for example, the Colorado Fresh Food Financing Fund to access fresh food funds, healthy living funds. We also have some bond financing for manufacturing nonprofits that we administer. We have allocations for new market tax credits to provide support for development projects. And then we also partner with Oedict, for example, on the Energize Colorado Business Financing Program. We are the administrator for that program as well. So on our next slide, again, this is the housing continuum that we use, and CHAFRA focuses on, that aligns with our housing finance programs and the types of housing options that, again, make up the housing continuum that we provide funding support to. So a housing continuum, again, shows the range of housing options, from emergency shelters to homeownership and anything in between. Each part of the housing continuum serves a unique need in the housing market. The sense is that one size does not fit all, and ideally, a community will have a range of housing options affordable to residents and its workforce. In regard to housing affordability defined, housing affordably is an important consideration for everyone regardless of income. So whether a household earns two-hundred-and-fifty thousand or fifty thousand annually, they must have a balance of how much they can afford to spend on housing costs, so that they also have sufficient income for other needs, such as food, clothing, transportation, medical expenses, and savings for emergency, for example. So generally, a household should not spend more than thirty percent of its annual gross income towards housing costs, as defined by what we determine as affordable housing. When renting, housing costs include both rent and utility expenses. In homeownership, housing costs include the mortgage loan principal, interest, property taxes, and insurance payments, as well as any homeowner association dues or mortgage insurance required. So households spending more than thirty percent of their annual gross income on housing are considered cost burden. Households spending fifty percent or more of their gross annual income towards housing are defined as extremely cost burden. So to help define, and again, on this chart, it lists and references the AMIs in association with the type of housing, and then, again, it aligns with our programs that we offer to support these types of housing. But the area median income, AMI, is an annual household income earned by the median or middle household in the region. So AMI is published annually by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, based on U.S. business data, and for each metropolitan and non-metropolitan statistical areas in the nation. AMI does vary, not only by geographic region, but also by household size. So AMI is, again, not only used by HUD, but it in turn is also used by CHAFRA to help us establish the income limits and the rent limits that determine eligibility for several assisted housing programs, again, that are outlined on this visual. HUD does, or HUD's income limits are based on both the median family income estimates and the fair market rental area definitions, again, somewhat of what I'm sharing with you today. So typically, like, on this chart, again, it's a great visual representation of the types of housing and how they make up the housing continuum and the associated area median incomes that typically align with each type of the housing. So at the front end here, you'll see homeless shelters, which traditionally are there to serve the unsheltered and undersheltered individuals. We also have the transitional and permanent supportive housing. Again, these are transitional housing, provides safe housing while facilitating the movement of homeless individuals and families to permanent supportive housing within a regional time amount. That timeframe usually from a trans, transitional housing is typically projected for about twenty-four months, so up to two years, to help those, again, individuals transition from unsheltered to, to permanent housing. And then permanent housing itself is affordable rental housing that is combined with supportive services, including innovation, innovative approaches to assist homeless persons in the transition, again, from homelessness, and to help them have the resources and tools that they would need to begin to live independently as possible. And then affordable rental housing, as you'll see here, these three, the homeless shelters, transitional supportive housing, typically do align with thirty percent AMI and less. So those are typically the individuals by wages that are being served in those types of housings. Affordable rental housing is rental housing that is provided at an affordable rate to low and moderate-income households, or households earning no more than sixty percent AMI. Often, affordable rental housing is the beneficiary, again, of private or public-sector subsidy designed to reduce the development cost of the property. These subsidies may be contributed as grants, tax credits, development waivers, land and material donations, or other favorable loan terms. Or in the case of housing vouchers, the subsidy may take the form of rental payment assistance on behalf of the resident. So typically, affordable rent restrictions are required to remain in place for a specific period and may be recorded with the property when subsidy is a factor. So again, that's usually when we're typically talking about affordable housing and rental housing financing programs, they do serve traditionally sixty percent AMI or less. Now, there's also the market rent housing, which is typically aligned with the sixty to a hundred percent AMI. And market rental housing is basically rental housing for which rental costs are based on current market prices. While there is no income limit or special requirements, residents do have to still prove that they are sufficient, they have sufficient income to pay rent and comply with property restrictions. So in some cases, as I review with you here shortly, the type of financing programs that CHAFRA has access to, to help with affordable housing, we can lend up, in some cases, up to the hundred percent AMI on affordable housing developments. But there is certain programs, like the tax credits, bonds, FHA insurance products, that are primarily limited to the sixty and below AMI. So on this next screen, you'll, here you'll see, again, the AMIs, but specific to Los Angeles County, and what the limits have been identified as far as a snapshot from the HUD income limits and maximum rental report. So as you can see, thirty percent AMI, for example, income limit is fourteen thousand nine hundred and ten for an individual, and rent for a one-bedroom at thirty percent would be three hundred and ninety-nine dollars a month. At sixty percent, again, another snapshot, income limit for an individual is just under thirty thousand, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty, and rent would be seven hundred and ninety-eight limit for a one-bedroom apartment or unit. And there is a copy of the full Colorado Income Limits and Rent Report that was provided as a handout, if you're interested in looking at it in a little bit more depth. On this next slide, oh, and then what I'll mention before I head to the next slide, is that the twenty-twenty-one income limits and maximum rent table will be available now in April. That will be used for future projects for this fiscal year. So community data, this is a snapshot of the type of data that we look at, at CHAFRA, and as we're assessing communities, and look, trying to get an idea of the type of need in those type, in those communities. So here you can see just a snapshot of the information that we pulled based on some of our sources that were identified at the bottom there, of what we have access to, to just get, again, a snapshot of the community. One thing to note, and again, it kind of, a lot of the information that was shared from the realtors earlier, does show that snapshot. If you could see here, in twenty nineteen, the median sale price for single-family homes was a hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred, and again, in twenty nineteen, and then in twenty twenty, it went up to two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's a forty-six percent increase in the cost of single-family homes. So those are the type of takeaways that we technically look at. Again, those that are cost burden, thirty percent of income, twenty percent for the city, forty-two for the county, and that when we mentioned the fifty percent income, severely cost-burden renters, forty-five percent for the city of Trinidad, and nineteen percent for the county. And then we also have the averages for Colorado here. You could see that Colorado's estate for single-family median sales prices, homes, went up eight-point-eight percent, but that's a significant difference for what you experienced there in Los Angeles County. So again, just another snapshot of the type of community data that we take a look at. A housing needs assessment, I know we've mentioned that in previous conversations, that is a great tool for communities to have and to implement on behalf of the community. Again, a housing assessment will provide a more in-depth review of a community's need for housing with data to support the identified types of housing, populations, sample senior housing, veteran housing, multifamily, and ranges of AMI that are identified, again, as that more specific need. And then in addition to that, usually when we're looking at a project specifically, a market study is another good resource that is completed or done for a project, and that basically gives more specific data to a proposed project that has been identified towards verifying or validating, for example, how many income-qualified renters there are to support the project and the feasibility of the project. So on the next slide, this is kind of the, starting the list of the resources, again, specifically that CHAFRA has access to, to help assist with rental housing finance. So again, the low-income housing tax credits, again, we are the administrator for the state of Colorado for the, there are two types, the nine percent and the four percent, that are offered annually. They are competitive for housing projects throughout the state of Colorado, and this is basically a federal income tax or state tax designed to incentivize private investors to place equity capital into the development of an eligible affordable housing, rental housing development. So we also have the state affordable housing tax credit. Again, this is a Colorado State Income Housing Tax Credit designed similarly to the federal tax, li-tac, to incentivize inventors with state income tax liability to place equity capital into the development projects. We also have our simple, the Small Multifamily Permanent Loan Program, and this is for a forty-year permanent financing for the takeout of a construction loan for projects that have received a reservation, again, of the nine percent li-tac tax credits, and usually is also paired with the Housing Opportunity Fund, or our HOFF program, loan for increased And then, again, construction loans for the four percent li-tac, we have the four percent li-tac tax exempt loan program. This is used for construction, again, for construction to permanent loan takeouts of up to forty years for four percent tax credits, utilizing, again, the, the tax credits, as well as usually paired with private activity bonds. Those are the traditional type of li-tac support-type programs that we have for housing development. There are also some flexible funding sources or secondary debt programs that we administer. Again, this is, includes the Healthy Housing Program, which is a revolving loan program that encourages healthy living components in affordable renting housing developments. We also have the Capital Magnet Fund. This provides up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in secondary gap financing for the preservation or new construction of projects that typically receive a reservation, again, of the four percent or the nine percent li-tac, and are located, they do have to be located in eligible areas and also serve incomes of, we flow fifty percent of AMI. And then the Housing Opportunity Fund, again, as I mentioned briefly, is a flexible source of financing, can be used to provide small permanent loans to multifamily projects, secondary loans, and to buy a, buy down a, a interest rate to leverage more loan proceeds to a project. HOFF is also used to create more innovation loan structures when needed, so that is, again, one of our internal flexible loan programs that we have used to help support a variety of, again, not only li-tac projects, but some of our small-scale type projects that come up in more urban and rural communities. And then lastly, a quick snapshot on some of our innovation solution programs that we have in the works. This, these are a list of, again, innovation projects that we're in the process of either newly administering, or, or developing, or in the process of leveraging now in twenty twenty-one. So the first one is SHIP, our Small-Scale Housing Innovation Program. This was one that we began working on in late twenty nineteen, that is now being launched this first quarter of twenty twenty-one. It is a new, again, CHAFRA program that will offer not only financing to small-scale, and when I say small-scale, thirty units or less housing projects, with the emphasis in our more rural, smaller communities. It will also have another second piece to it where we can offer technical assistance in pre-development to help navigate the feasibilities and the needs or capacity building for communities to be able to Or capacity building for communities to be able to leverage small scale affordable housing development in their community. So again, technical assistance in small scale housing financing, that's a little bit more flexible for the needs of our rural and smaller scale projects. The second one, the Safe Outdoor Spaces, and this is initiative that was first effort, it's a first effort of its kind. That's actually taken place endeavor to create safe outdoor spaces for individuals experiencing homelessness as part of a comprehensive response to COVID nineteen. So it was created by the Colorado Village Cooperative, Interfaith Alliance of Colorado, with support with Radiant Architecture. And CHAFA is in the process of providing support and partnering as well to collaborate on, again, some innovative ways to not only help save the program with some funds. But to also bring best practices to other areas that might see a need for such safe door out spaces for this kind of efforts with homelessness. And then our First Look Program. First Look is a program that we launched in twenty twenty last year. And it basically offers CHAFA's single family properties that we have in our portfolio that are in the process of being conveyed to HUD. Whether through foreclosure or for whatever reason have been turned back over to CHAFA. We are working with local communities where those properties are located. To give them basically a first look at these properties to be able to purchase them and turn them, rehab them or turn them over for affordable housing projects. So we are receiving proposals to purchase these homes, again, from qualified nonprofits or municipalities that are interested. And working with them on that purchase price to again, be able to turn them over to the local communities to be able to have them back online for housing needs. And then our community investment, I will mention is basically something that CHAFA has been doing for many years is a percentage of our proceeds that we profit annually. Is then turned back, given back, I should say, to our local communities or local communities through grants, through our corporate giving. As well as individuals like myself that serve as community relationship managers as we work with our local communities. To provide some support through technical assistance and listening to their needs and providing some solutions. We have access to some community enhancement dollars that we can help implement and support local initiatives. So we had over two point one million that was provided back through community investment to our local communities. Again, many in the forms of grants in twenty twenty, many of that was grants to provide COVID relief support to the local nonprofits and businesses. And that is again, something that we're looking to leverage a little bit more as we grow our community relationship program and our managers to be statewide. Again, we live and serve the communities, live in the communities we serve on behalf of CHAFA. So that is another opportunity to look to leverage support in pre-development and, and some of those technical assistance and capacity building efforts. And hopefully, I got through a lot of information in a short period of time, but there is a lot of handouts that we provided. Again, on the housing continuum, some white papers on the housing continuum and the affordability gap that hopefully will be able to provide more details. And here's my contact information, so I'm happy to answer any questions or connect with anybody as a follow-up as needed. And at this time, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to the main group. Thank you again for the opportunity to participate.
Thank you Caroline, that, that was a lot of information. And the city will provide, provide that information that we receive to anybody if they want to contact us. We'll try and put some links up on our website also, if that's possible. Audra, I believe Melissa Neerson with the Bolo Division of Housing is next. If she, if you can hit with her and share screens, that would be great. Melissa is a housing development specialist and she's got some very interesting information. Plus some, some case studies of ideas of what's been done throughout the state and I think they will be helpful.
Yeah, hi everyone, my name is Melissa Neerson. I'll go ahead and just quickly introduce myself while Audra is pulling up that PowerPoint presentation. And I guess, Audra, I'm not sure, I tried to share my screen, but it says that I'm disabled from doing so. And so I'll let you do what you're doing, but I might need some guidance on that quickly. Oh, nope, here we go, I think I got it. Well, that's your screen, okay. So my name is Melissa, I'm with the Colorado Division of Housing, I am a housing development specialist. I am also with the, I am also based, just like Caroline, in Pueblo, Colorado, and I serve the southeast region. Can everyone see my screen now, can they see this slide?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so what I'm going to do today, I'm just going to go over kind of a brief overview of what the Division of Housing does. And then I did want to introduce some case studies that I think, you know, might be something that we can look at in the Trinidad area that could be helpful. And so what the Division of Housing does is we are able to partner with our local communities to create affordable housing opportunities. And homes that are affordable, safe and secure. We have four main divisions within the Division of Housing. The division I work in is the Office of Housing Finance and Sustainability. Our main focus is on housing development, preservation and housing compliance after we develop these properties. We have the Office of Regulatory Oversight and their main duty is to monitor the rules and regulations for mobile and manufactured homes. We also have the Office of Rental Assistance that administers housing choice vouchers throughout the state of Colorado. And lastly, within the Division of Housing is the Office of Homeless Initiatives. And they come up with, they work with the local partners to find ways, creative ways to provide wraparound services to end homelessness or reduce homelessness. Just an overview of what the department that I'm going to be talking about today does, the Office of Housing and Finance Sustainability. So we do a couple of different things. One of the biggest things that we do, particularly in our rural communities, is we provide technical assistance. So we can be there just as, you know, that additional partner to help point developers or nonprofits looking to develop in the right direction. So that they can find ways to make these affordable housing opportunities come to reality. Whether that's trying to set up financial stacks for the property or just pointing on the, the area, you know, to Caroline, for instance, we work very closely. We offer a variety of training and workshops. So the first one that we do, unfortunately because of COVID, this did not happen in twenty twenty. We do anticipate that twenty twenty-one, we will be back with these trainings. But the Developers Toolkit is just a very base level knowledge of how to go through a housing development to build affordable housing. As well as the different avenues that are available for financing. Hammering Out the Deal is a part two to the Developers Toolkit where we take an actual case study that we have done. And we will go through all of the struggles that we had with it and how we came, came out of the deal and were able to make it work. Permanent Supportive Housing Toolkit, we do collaborate with one of our other divisions within the Division of Housing. To show folks how they can create different permanent supportive housing opportunities with those wraparound services for our very high needs clients. And then we also have monthly webinars and we have a variety of different topics that we cover. Really, they're, they're much more informal, they're free, we do them second Wednesday of every month. And we take input as far as what the community wants us to, to present on. So if anybody ever has any ideas, feel free to reach out, we, we just might do one on that. Another one of the big things that we do is we offer a variety of grant and loan programs for affordable housing development. So there are anything from one-time grants or loans for our larger development projects that we do. Such as, you know, a new apartment complex or a new homeownership opportunity. And then we have revolving loans for rehabilitation and down payment assistance, which I'll get into those in, in coming slides. Areas of impact, so how has the housing, the Division of Housing impacted Colorado? So in our fiscal year, year twenty twenty fiscal year, which ended in June last year. We issued over eight thousand housing choice vouchers to residents to help their rent become affordable. Eighty-three percent of those went to individuals with disabilities. We were able to house sixteen hundred people from homelessness and get them a safe, secure house to, to live in. We created over five thousand affordable housing opportunities, many of which were collaborated with CHAFA to create these. Whether it's through new construction, housing preservation or rehabilitation to where properties stayed affordable rather than going out to the private market. And then we've also modified several homes, over seven hundred homes to support folks with disabilities. And inspected nearly eight hundred manufactured homes for safety. So of our projects, the first two, this is kind of what exactly what we do, kind of drilled down a little bit more. So the rental acquisition and rehabilitation, these, these first two bullet points are what most of DOH comes in and supports financially with. So when there's a new construction or at rehab, we can come in and provide subsidies to the project. We do have rules and regulations for that, you know, certain AMI percentages have to be met for rentals and, well, and homeownership opportunities. However, we can come up in and provide a certain amount per unit for each of those, those projects. For our revolving products, we have down payment assistance. So we partner with local community organizations and we give them revolving dollars to assist low income individuals. Or those, most of our programs go up to a hundred percent AMI for down payment assistance. And then our single family owner occupied rehab, I know that's a lot of words in there, but what that really is. Is we're able to give loans or grants to individuals who need substantial repair to their home that would not otherwise be able to afford it. And we're able to do that very flexibly by making sure that their home is still affordable in what Caroline was just presenting on. And that they still remain, you know, under that thirty percent of their income being used towards their, towards their monthly housing payments. We offer supportable housing services, I'm sorry, permanent supportive housing services. And so we offer funds for those permanent supportive housing projects. We are able to offer ongoing funds to pay for those services. In the past, we have also offered funded homeless shelters to ensure that we're able to get folks off of the streets. As well as just general operating funds for what we call CHODOs, which are community housing development organizations. We're able to offer an annual grant to those CHODOs to make sure that they are doing those development activities. And, and get development activities in the local areas. So just to kind of drill down on, on one of the main projects, which is our new construction and acquisition rehab projects. DOH does not fully fund these projects. We come in as a gap funder, so we underwrite these projects, determine what the gap is, and then we will fund the gap up to a certain amount. We are not generally anticipated to be the primary funder, although there have been situations where, where we can do that. And I will get into one with a case study when we do. We, we look at applications monthly, so it is not, it is not something you have to come in once a year for. We can, we can take an application anytime, so anytime that somebody's going to come to us with an application, we ask them to come in early so that we can work with them. Leading up to their actual application, and then we do review those monthly. We, we underwrite them and we look for everything, we, we want to make sure that folks are at least trying to get some sort of local support. We want to make sure that the market, you know, supports the project that's going to be going there, that the cost per unit is reasonable. And just the overall feasibility of the project. In general, we do, so we will put a use covenant on the projects that we fund. In general, our rental limits have to be below sixty percent of the area medium income, which is what Caroline was presenting on earlier. And then we do have some deeper regulations where at least five percent of that has to be at or below thirty percent of the AMI. Serving a client at or below thirty percent of the area median income. Our homeownership opportunities are much, we're able to go higher. So we are able to go to a hundred percent AMI for most of our funds. We do have one, I guess, pot of money that we are able to go up to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income in non-urban areas, which would be Trinidad. And so that was new legislation, I have a slide on that here in just a moment, and we'll touch on that as well. We generally rule of thumb, we do grants to nonprofits and loans to for-profit developers. We, we will not do a grant to a for-profit developer. There are times where some of our nonprofits need a grant, they max out the amount that we're able to give for a grant. So we're able to do a very low cost, low interest loan on top of that. But generally grants go to nonprofit and go local government entities, and then loans are for the for-profit developers. So I'm not going to dig too deep into legislation here, but there was a bill that was passed recently, House Bill nineteen dash thirteen twenty-two. And what this did is it took the funds that we get from the state, which we do get a substantial amount of funds from the state, as well as from the federal government. But we were able to take those and increase the AMI limits to a hundred and twenty percent for those non-urban households. It also increased the amount for down payment assistance that we were able to do from eighty percent to a hundred percent. And really just extended some of those revolving loan programs and what those are able to do. For instance, the homeownership owner occupied rental rehab program was able to now use some of those funds for mobile homes. Whereas before, there was nothing for folks who owned their mobile homes and had a major repair that needed to be done. And then we did increase some of the regional staffing in our rural areas. So what, what, you know, a lot of my presentation here is, is these case studies. So the first case study is something that I really think is, is a good opportunity for Trinidad. I just wanted to put out there that these case studies, we don't have to work in a box at all times. We can kind of warp some of these funds and, and be creative with them and make a project that works for you. So, you know, some of these refer to the local housing authority was the person who was involved, that does not always have to be the case. There can be other, other folks involved with this, so just keep that in mind when we're looking at these. The first case study, and this is the one that in hearing, you know, the Realtors speak, in hearing a lot of folks speak today. This would probably create the opportunity that it sounds like is needed the most. And so what the city of Montevista did is they had a hundred and fourteen homes that were blighted, dilapidated, they were uninhabitable throughout their community. They were owned, you know, some were owned by the city, some were owned by the county, some were owned by private landlords. And they came up with a way to be able to take all of these, not all at once, it's a very, you know, it's a, a several year program. But to rehab these, so these would create affordable homeownership opportunities by acquiring these vacant dilapidated single family homes. They would then rehab them, or in some cases, if they were not able to be rehabbed, they would demolish them and reconstruct them. And then they would resell them to an individual that is under that AMI limit. Theirs happened to be eighty to a hundred percent AMI, I'm sorry, eighty to one hundred and twenty percent. This did happen before that House Bill came in in two thousand and nineteen, so we could, you know, look at a hundred and twenty percent AMI for these. They did twenty-eight, and I say they did them, they are not finished with this, so I apologize if I'm talking about it in past tense. But the idea was to do twenty-eight units that, as I mentioned, serve those eighty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. How this was funded was the Division of Housing came in with six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Really, that was the only actual funds in the project. Montevista came in with some in-kind labor to the project. There's other ways that we could look at, you know, some sort of in-kind donation or whatever to a, to a funding staff like this. I know in previous conversations, there has been some concern about the AMI limits. So on these case studies, I just wanted to point out that I did go ahead and put in what the Los Anamis County AMI income limits would be for these. For a two and a half percent household, so if we were to, if you were to look at something like this, you know, if we were to do some homeownership opportunities for those folks at eighty percent AMI. That would be a cap. that would be a cap of roughly $40,000 for a family of, this is 2.5 because that's the average, but it gives you a good idea of where it would be. So this is the really cool thing about this project, is they would go ahead and they would acquire the property, they would rehab the property, once it's done, they would sell it to the qualified home buyer. Those funds would then revolve, the home buyer would pay back the funds that were into it, and they get to start the process all over again. So this just keeps going. So this initial investment of $625,000 is going to continue to create homeownership opportunities in the city of Montevista for years to come. The Delta County Rental Property Rehabilitation Program. So this is a unique one, this is one of only two of its kind that we have done. But what this was is in Delta County, they had a lot of rental properties that were in need of substantial repair in order for them to come back on the market to be rental assistant, or rental properties. So the Delta County Housing Authority actually applied for this. And what would happen is the landlords would come to Delta County Housing Authority and ask for a low-interest loan. I know that I'm having conversations with some folks other, in other areas of the state, and we're looking at something very similar to this because they, the appraisals won't support the property value. So the landlords are having issues getting loans on some of these properties, and they may not need too much work, but they can't get the rental units back online unless they have someone that can lend on them. So once the housing authority would give these loans out, the housing authority would actually receive an administrative fee to pay for their salary and any other expenses that were incurred to administer this program. And then we would require, I think this one was for six years, that the tenants be at or below 80% of AMI in the units. So this is similar to the previous one. CHAFA actually came in with most of these funds for this particular unit. I don't know what that, that financial stack would look like. It would be something that Caroline and I would have to discuss, but I think it's definitely a feasible project if somebody wanted to look at something like this. But they were able to do 10 units of rental rehab and create 10 rental opportunities in the area using this program. And again, it's, it's that revolving loan fund, they loan it out to the landlords, they rehab it, the tenant ends up coming in there, an eligible tenant, the landlord pays it back. Now, this one does not come back as quickly because it's, it's a long-term loan, but that principal and interest becomes program income, which then the housing authority is able to re-loan and start the process all over again. Okay, the third case study that I wanted to present is just a way that if you use natural affordability in housing and look at a naturally affordable model, it is possible to do new construction without looking at those large low-income housing tax credits that CHAFA offers. That is, you know, generally the primary avenue to create new affordable housing rental projects. So in San Juan County, this was three years ago, the city of Silverton was able to create 28 new units of affordable housing, new construction. What they did is the city was involved and the city was able to tap into some other funds for a lot of the infrastructure in order to get this done because the city was involved. So here we have the, the total financing stack on this. The Division of Housing gave both a grant and a loan. The grant was $300,000, the loan was the remaining amount, $336,000 roughly to this. They did have, the San Juan County donated the land, which was valued at approximately $240,000, as well as an additional $29,000 contribution. But where, where the city comes in, in this one, and this, this was a few years ago, whether or not these types of funds would be available, I don't think that we could get this, you know, this much, $480,000 into a project now, but we could look at, you know, possibly doing some infrastructure. So what this does is if you have a naturally affordable project, and I refer to IndyDwell because I'm familiar with them, but such as IndyDwell, you can create affordable housing, new construction, without the low-income housing, without subsidies attached to it, or without, you know, large subsidies attached to it, just because they are such, they're naturally affordable to begin with. So it is possible to do something like that with, with new construction and, you know, without those large tax credits. And the last one that I wanted to show up, which is interesting because I saw some stuff in the, the comment box earlier about a possible adaptive reuse, was something that they are doing right now in Cortez, Colorado. Colquins Commons used to be an old schoolhouse in Cortez. And they are actually looking at rehabbing the schoolhouse and turning it into 12 units of affordable housing. And on top of that, they are building 30 additional units in an adjacent lot, which I think used to be the old field. The tenants, there's a variety of tenants in here, but they're all at or below 80% of the AMI. And this one is definitely much more in-depth than any of the other projects I've shown you. The financial stack on this is, they, they definitely went out and got anything that they could. So they came to the Division of Housing for a grant of $800,000. They have a first mortgage and a second mortgage, which the rents on the property do support. And they went into CHAFA for three different low-income housing tax credits, both the 9%, the state, and historic tax credits. And the seller did carry a $500,000 note. So this one, you know, this is the, definitely the hardest one to attain. But I just wanted to show that these projects are possible in rural Colorado. You know, a lot of people think that LITC is not something that is able to be used in rural Colorado, but it does happen, it can happen, and if there's a need, it could be something that, you know, a developer may want to look at. And I guess that I will turn this back over to Mike, I think we're at the end. And so I thank everybody for having me on, and I look forward to what might come down in Trinidad.
Thank you, Melissa. Just a lot of information for everybody, which way is generating some interest and some opportunities for, for everybody. Speaking of opportunities, we have Mike Landis and Andrew Wallace from OEdit. I don't know if they're going to tag team this presentation or not, but Mike, if you're on, he's our Opportunity Zone Program Director.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
I was going to say, we're into this already a couple of hours. Do you think it might be time maybe give the participants maybe like a five-minute break at some point?
Sure, we can, as Audrey shares a screen with Mr. Landis, we can, we can take a five-minute break. I've got exactly straight up 5:00, so come back at 5:05 and we'll, we'll continue on. So Mayor, I've got, I've got 5:05, I don't know, we can give a few more minutes, we could start back up.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, this is Mike Landis.
Hi, how are you?
I'm, I'm doing all right. I want to warn you that since it's 5:00, my babysitter went home and my wife's not home yet. So this may be a toddler-assisted presentation.
Okay.
I will beg the attendees forgiveness for potential two-year-old yelling in the background. Welcome to the age of Zoom.
Well, Mayor, I think, everybody ample time, I think, Mr. Landis, if you, if you would, go ahead and start your presentation, we appreciate you coming.
All right, can everybody see my presentation? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Well, so first of all, a big thank you to the mayor, our council members, and everyone else here from Trinidad for having us on here today, really appreciate you having us. My name is Mike Landis, I'm the OZ Program and Special Projects Director for the Colorado Office of Economic Development and International Trade. I'm here with my colleague Andrew Wallace, who's one of our program analysts, and we're going to talk to you folks a little bit about the Opportunity Zone Program and the Enterprise Zone Program. And again, I'll say for anyone just joining, my two-year-old is in the background and he will likely contribute to this presentation, and I will try to minimize that to the best of my ability. So just real quick before we jump into anything, when we talk about the Opportunity Zone Program, what we're really talking about is an incentive that has been placed in the tax code that's designed to encourage investors to leave their money in projects for long-term periods of time. And essentially, the way that the Opportunity Zone Program incentive works is that a qualified investor will, will take capital gains that they've got from selling an asset and put them in what's called a qualified opportunity fund. And it's essentially a type of LLC that's designated for the use of this kind of investment. The opportunity fund will then deploy the money from those capital gains in a project that sits in an opportunity zone. And opportunity zones were designated in 2017. Trinidad has a significant opportunity zone. You can find the map of Trinidad's opportunity zone on our website. And I'll have to buy more information about that in a little bit. But suffice to say, the fund deploys this money in the Opportunity Zone project. And if the money is kept in that project for at least 10 years, any gains made from the sale of that, from, from, from that investment will not be taxed by the federal government. So that's a very, very powerful incentive if you're able to be patient with your capital. And part of the reason why this is something that's important to talk about in today's meeting is because you're here talking about the importance of expanding your opportunities for housing. And last I checked, it's not very easy to move your housing from one location to another. So if you've got an opportunity zone and you're looking to build housing projects within that zone, there's a chance to gather private investment to support those projects using the Opportunity Program, Opportunity Zone Program. From the perspective of the state, we see this in a couple of, we see, essentially approach this process in, in a, in a few different ways. First of all, we designated 126 opportunity zones across the state, and we focused those zones in rural areas that have the opportunity to grow and develop. And that's part of the reason why Trinidad is part of this conversation, because there's obviously room for growth and development. One of the things that we try to do is we try to educate investors and stakeholders and city officials about how the Opportunity Zone incentive operates and ways in which they can add it to their strategic plan and make it a part of their vision for development in their town. We try to support our communities, we, as I said, education is a big part of it, but we're also here to provide technical assistance and connect other, other folks who are experts within this space, finance experts, lawyers who know this space particularly well. Thanks, bud. And we also try to facilitate investments to a certain degree. And that's a matter of being in the position of the state where we're able to say, okay, we know a network of investors, we know a network of projects, can we find a way to marry those two and bring money to the projects that need to get off the ground? We've got a few pillars for a mindset of 2020 and 2021. First of all, the OZ Program at the state has a steering committee that oversees its operations. And that steering committee includes a grant program that can support communities that are looking to do things like housing assessments. And that's, the, the funds for those grants go from, there's a small mini-grant that can be used to help with marketing and support of development of a strategic plan for $2,000. And then we have a larger grant that goes up to $10,000 or even $20,000 to help committees, communities that are trying to put together the assessments that you folks are talking about today. We also think a little bit about how the Opportunity Zone Program operates in terms of business versus Um, we also, uh, think a little bit about how the Opportunity Zone Program operates in terms of business versus real estate. Um, as I said earlier, the OZ Program works very, very well for real estate in the sense that, um, real estate investors who are okay with keeping a project for 10 years and, and substantially, uh, improving the physical space of the project can very easily take advantage of the OZ Program. But we also try to, uh, help investors reach businesses through the OZ Program and, uh, because what we'd like to see is those OZ dollars being applied to, applied in ways that have a bigger impact on communities. So if you have businesses in Trinidad that sit within Trinidad's Opportunity Zone, there's a chance that they may have access to capital through the Opportunity Zone Program that they wouldn't otherwise have an opportunity to, uh, touch, or even investors who they wouldn't be able to talk to. Um, and finally, I, in terms of collaboration, I'm thrilled that we're sharing this platform with DOLA and CHAFA, which are doing fabulous work in the space of helping to develop communities and, and work specifically in the housing area. Um, we are very much at OEDIT interested in collaborating with other, uh, state agencies, and we also try to build our relationships with our local communities, just like we're doing now. So that's something that's very important to us. Um, all right, come on slide. Next, there we go. Um, one other thing that we're doing, I, I mentioned the fact that we're supporting businesses. I won't go too into depth on this, but we run a program called the OZ Capital Accelerator Program. There's my son who's contributing to our presentation. Um, the OZ Capital Accelerator Program is designed to partner with businesses that are in opportunity zones, help them develop their strategic plan, their fundraising plan, their pitch to investors, and then connect them to investors themselves, uh, to try to get them funding to get their projects off the ground. Um, we are going to be running another round of our Capital Accelerator Program that will likely open for applications in May. Um, so that's just something to put in the back of your heads. If you've got businesses that are looking to start up in Trinidad, um, this is a, a program that may be beneficial for them. Um, and, and finally, I'll just say more broadly, OEDIT's goals, um, from the perspective of the OZ Program is that we want to create and promote um, virtual community-based events to bring attention to projects that are happening within opportunity zones. And that is, yes, thanks, buddy. And that is something where, um, once again, if you have businesses that could potentially benefit from something like our OzCap Program, or you're trying to promote a project with connections to the city, uh, to the investor class, then we could, uh, then I would say that this is an opportunity for the Opportunity Zone Program to connect with you and potentially, uh, put that out through our network and create an event where we could ask investors to attend and look carefully at the project. Um, and one of the things that I've highlighted at the end of this slide is that it's important to bear in mind that access to OZ dollars, Opportunity Zone money, is not the only metric of success for how we approach our program. Which is to say, that if we can connect you to an investor who operates in the Opportunity Zone space, but ends up providing you with funding for an investment that is not an Opportunity Zone investment, we are still going to consider that a win. We think that our main goal at the end of the day here is to make sure that communities that are looking to develop and grow and build their housing and, and everything that goes along with that, get access to an investor class that they wouldn't otherwise have an opportunity to talk to. Um, and with that, I'm going to spare the rest of you, uh, the sounds of my son in the background and turn it over to Andrew, who's going to talk about the Enterprise Zone Program.
Perfect, thanks, Mike. Um, so today I'm going to go over the Enterprise Zone Program. Um, this is a program that's, um, been happening, um, throughout Colorado since the 1980s. But it, um, it's a really interesting program that can be utilized for communities to not only attract businesses and business investment, but also helps support some of the roundabout services in regards to housing and support some of these sort of, um, preparatory services in regards to getting housing. One of those services being attracting, um, individuals who can actually work on the construction or rehabilitation of housing. So, um, all of Los Anamis County is part of the Enterprise Zone. Um, each Enterprise Zone has a local Enterprise Zone Administrator. Um, for the South Central Region, that local Enterprise Zone Administrator is Walt Bolden with the South Central Council of Governments, who is located in Trinidad. Um, below, you'll see a list of some of the credits, tax credits that we offer. So these are state income tax credits, um, for businesses. And so a few of the ones that I wanted to highlight, um, having some experience working with Trinidad, I actually spent, um, a year working for the city, um, in the economic and community development space. Um, the first one that I want to highlight is actually the vacant, um, building rehabilitation tax credit. Um, so this is an opportunity, um, unfortunately, many of the Enterprise Zone tax credits can't go towards sort of direct costs of building housing. But this is an opportunity, um, that I think is relevant for Trinidad. Trinidad has, um, many multi, um, occupation units, especially around Main Street, where the main floor is used for commercial. And the second floor historically was used for, um, was historically used for rentals or, um, housing space. And a lot of that housing space has gone vacant. Um, and so the vacant building rehabilitation tax credit is a 25% tax credit on rehab expenditures. So sort of the hard cost of rehabbing a vacant building. The only criteria of that, um, vacant building rehabilitation is that the building is two years old and, um, or sorry, the building is 25 years old and has been vacant for at least two years. So this might be an opportunity for some of the smaller investors in Trinidad to rehabilitate some of their, um, upper units that are mixed-use units, um, in the downtown area to start opening up some of those um, potential rental spaces that we talked about in the short term for some of those mining operations or other individuals. Um, and so that would be a very lucrative, um, tax credit for someone who's looking to rehab part of their building or someone who is a renter, because a renter can also do this, looking to rehabilita, um, rehabilitate a space like that. Um, the other tax credits are definitely more focused towards, um, specifically businesses. But with that is an opportunity for some of the businesses, um, that Trinidad needs specifically in construction trades to be able to sort of launch, um, their business and also to help fund some of the initial costs of business. So things including employee-sponsored health insurance, hiring new employees, training those employees, and, um, investment in that business. So if you, um, bought a construction company and you were doing framing and you needed to buy a backhoe and you needed to buy new equipment, um, all of those type of purchases could be subsidized through tax credits to the Enterprise Zone as well as helping you subsidize, um, offering your employees health insurance, hiring on new employees. So this could be a potential tool for any type of construction trade business that wants to expand, um, their operation in Trinidad. This could help, um, sort of suffice some of the costs in expanding their operation in Trinidad. And then the final credit, um, which I haven't posted on here, um, it's a little different version of a credit, but this is the Enterprise Zone Contribution Project Tax Credit. Um, the Contribution Project Tax Credit is a 25% tax credit for people who donate to contribution projects. These contribution projects are usually based, um, out of a nonprofit or out of a city entity. Um, and the reason why I bring this up is because this is an opportunity for potential, um, low-income housing or affordable housing units to be built, um, in the community and to be incentivized by not only people in the community, but people donating from outside the community. So this tax credit, um, is a 25% tax credit, which is pretty lucrative for, um, an individual who's making a charitable donation. And we see projects throughout the state in different enterprise zones with both, um, local government entities as well as, um, nonprofits like Habitat for Humanity, who use this tax credit to increase the amount of, um, donations that they get and rapidly increase the timeline of their projects. We've seen in some of our Western Slope towns, um, 40 to 50, um, condominiums, sort of townhouse units being built for affordable housing, specifically a lot for, uh, medical workers, teachers, some of those critical needs, employees in the cities who need affordable housing, who need places to live, but can't, um, either find rentals because there's low housing stock or find house that they can afford because of the market changes, either from new businesses coming in, lack of housing stock, or from, um, inflow from other parts of the state. And so this would be an opportunity to sort of, um, work with, whether it's a Habitat for Humanity or even someone like the city of Trinidad or the housing, um, jurisdiction in Trinidad, to work to create some type of affordable housing concept where you can leverage private money as well as, um, public donations to build these units at a faster rate and also make them affordable so that individuals can move into them and you can really keep a strong workforce in Trinidad that's able to feel secure. And with that security, helps people stay for a lot longer. So that's a few ways that the Enterprise Zone, um, tax credit, um, can be used to help housing development, whether that's on the incentivizing bringing construction trade workers to Trinidad or incentivizing, um, sort of the building of affordable housing. Um, with that, um, I would always recommend working with your local Enterprise Zone Administrator, Walt Bolden, first. Um, he is your local expert and can help you out, but you can also always, um, reach out to us and we can help you understand some of the other projects that have gone through in the Contribution Project space or how any of these credits can be used to help incentivize housing or businesses around the housing market. Um, I'm also going to cover just two sort of programs. We did a little bit of outreach with some of our other state agencies to find some programs to really figure out housing assessment needs. Um, housing assessment needs are really important because it really not only tells you what type of housing you need, but also tells investors and potential, um, contractors, builders, all of those entities that there is a market there and what type of market is there. And so two of these programs, um, they're both outside of OEDIT, but they're both, um, interesting programs that, um, the city of Trinidad and the community could take advantage of to potentially, um, have housing assessment nee, um, needs be funded through the government rather than having to fund them on their own. So the first one is the Universal, University Technical Assistance Program. And so this is a unique program that Co- um, Colorado developed, but basically, um, it's a partnership between Colorado Center for Community Development and the University of Colorado Denver System in DOLA. And what this does is this provides students who are entering into this field of housing assessment, community assessment, to actually have the opportunity to work with rural communities and give them the technical design assistance they need for both public, um, improvement projects and, um, housing projects. And so this would be an opportunity to sort of utilize, um, university knowledge and, um, free technical assistance to figure out community planning, housing assistance planning, um, and housing assessment planning, to really figure out where's the best place for housing, how much housing is needed. Um, I've, we heard some conversations from realtors about public space and having sort of a good area to live, and that's partially for that public improvement projects. And so really looking at holistically what it would look like, um, in regards to meeting the housing needs and meeting not only the needs in regards to housing, but me, meeting the needs in regards to what people are looking for in a livable space. Um, the second program, um, is the Energy Mineral Impact Assistance Fund. Um, I know this program has, um, actually been used in Trinidad before, but we have seen instances in other communities where they have actually used that fund in regards to showing, um, that they have been impacted by the loss of energy or mineral assistance, um, which as we know Trinidad has been impacted by that. To, um, use those funds to figure out solutions for the community, and one of those solutions, um, specifically now is housing development. And so there are opportunities, and we have seen situations from other communities where they've used the Energy Mineral Impact Assistance Fund to do housing assessments. And a lot of times that is sort of a great first step in attracting developers, attracting contractors, attracting people to invest and work on increasing housing stock in communities. And with that, um, that is our pro, um, the end of our presentation. Please feel free to reach out to myself or Mike Lands with any question, Landis with any question, um, on either the Enterprise Zone Program um, or the Opportunity Zone Program or any of the programs that we referenced, and we're happy to connect you, um, with the relevant parties if we can assist you with any questions you have.
Well, thank you, Mike and Andrew. Appreciate that and, and that somebody joined you, Mike, there, so thank you for that. Um, so there are a lot of opportunities out there, a lot of funding, even more than we presented. Um, next we have, uh, uh, Dr. Rhonda Epper, uh, President of our, uh, Trinidad State College, and Keith Gibson, who, uh, have started a, uh, certificate program in their building trades to, uh, help with the, the workforce required, uh, moving forward. So I don't know if there's a screen share, if you have presentation, uh, Dr. Epper or Keith, or if you just want to fire away.
Uh, we don't have a screen share presentation, uh, Mike, and it will be quick. So thank you, everyone, for hanging in there to the last presentation. Um, I'm Rhonda Epper, President of Trinidad State Junior College, hopefully soon to be Trinidad State College. Uh, and I'm joined by my colleague, Keith Gibson. And, uh, we're, we're excited to share with you some information on our new construction technology program. Some of you know that we have been talking about this program for quite some time. Um, it's, it's been, I think, over a year in the making, and we're finally getting it launched on March 15th. Um, just by way of a little bit of background, and the handout that we provided covers some of this. Um, the program is a partnership with the Colorado Attorney General's Office in which the AG's office is investing $5 million in southeastern Colorado to address blighted housing and rural economic growth. And there's three community colleges that are leading efforts to address bliding, uh, blighted housing in our respective communities. So in addition to Trinidad State, Otero Junior College and Lamar Community College, uh, are also in, involved in the project. The AG funds, the $5 million, was divided equally between the three of us. And I'm really proud to say that Trinidad State is the first out of the gate with our program. And we're currently enrolling students for our March 15th start date. Um, to facilitate the training, we've purchased two homes on Stonewall Avenue. They're actually right next to each other. And the students will be attending class in the morning, and then they'll be working on the job site in the afternoon. And they'll be learning some basic building and renovation skills. And I'm going to ask Keith to share more with you about that curriculum in just a moment. But I, I wanted to, um, first just try and put this project into a little bit of context for today's meeting, if I can. Um, the houses that we're renovating through this project, um, are definitely going to make a difference in our community. But we're talking about a relatively small number of homes being renovated each year. Maybe three, maybe four, uh, possibly five, once we really get going with the program. But renovating houses is not a core competency of Trinidad State. Where I think we really will make a big difference, um, in the issue we're, we're discussing today is in workforce training, which is our core competency. And we have the capacity to train about 90 new construction workers per year through this program. Um, so we have a limit of 10 per class, and we're hoping to run, um, nine classes each year. So the renovated houses that we'll be putting back into the market are really, in my mind, a side benefit. Um, and it's also a way that we can make the funds from the AG's office, um, last longer. So, um, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Keith to provide more details on the program. Um, uh, one more thing that I wanted to mention, um, before I do that, is that we could really use your help in recruiting students for this program. Um, as I mentioned, we have room for 10 students per class. And the first class, um, the one that begins on March, uh, 15th is not quite half full. Um, it's really a great deal for students because they'll be getting a stipend for their time working on the job site. They'll also receive a set of tools and a tool belt worth about $350 if they complete the four-week program with perfect attendance. And we've received a lot of interest from prospective students, but we need them to enroll. And, um, we're going to run the, these classes regardless of whether the classes are full because the program is subsidized through, through the AG grant. But if we're not running the classes full, we're not really meeting the need, um, of, of workforce, um, training. So if you could help us spread the word, we would appreciate it. Um, I know there's some contractors here on the call today. If you have prospective employees who, um, need some basic, uh, skills training, please, please send them our way. Another idea that we've thought about is that this would be a great opportunity for high school students. Um, especially, um, this summer, we have classes start, starting in June and a class starting in July. So if you know a rising junior or a rising senior who might be interested, um, in this training program, please send them our way. Um, so thank you for your support and for including us in this discussion, and, um, I'm going to hand it over to Keith.
Thank you. We, uh, have put this program together. Trinidad has been in need of, uh, an educational program to support contractors and construction trades for a long time. Our historic, uh, building trades program has been gone for a while. And we've had conversations with several of the contractors in the area and at, at different times with folks at the Workforce Center to folks at the Workforce Center to try to find ways to fill the need, uh, in the local community of, uh, employable entry-level workers. And a lot of things happened to come together, uh, kind of at the same time to make this, uh, this program, uh, happen for us. It, uh, as Dr. Epper indicated, it's a fast, intense, four-week program. Uh, students will spend the morning in the classroom, afternoon out on the job site renovating the houses. The idea is after four weeks, they have the entry-level skills to be able to get a job, hold a job, become a better employee, and be ready to have a job. Uh, the classroom portion is based around the NCCR, that's the National, uh, Center for Construction Education and Research. It's a national accreditation agency, um, and they have a, a certification that students will earn from that. And that, uh, entry-level core curriculum involves, uh, job site safety, it involves, uh, uh, hand tools, handheld power tools, uh, basic, uh, construction drawing reading, uh, some construction math, uh, some basic work skills, uh, workplace skills kind of things. And, uh, then the afternoon, uh, we'll be renovating these derelict houses, and the model that we have is very similar to the, uh, case study that Melissa Nielsen had, uh, in Montavista, and I'm much interested in talking to her about that later, uh, where we will take some of these blighted houses, uh, in town that aren't practical for a commercial contractor to renovate because the money's just not there, it just doesn't work. And we'll use those as our job site, training site, so students will be doing the work on those. And what, uh, actual carpentry skills they get will depend on what stage of the, uh, project that we're in at the particular time they're taking the class. So we will have, uh, as she indicated, a class starting on, uh, March fifteenth, uh, another starting about the middle of April, uh, then June and July. This calendar year, we'll have seven classes, uh, next calendar year, we'll have, uh, nine, and we hope that, uh, we'll be able to roll this out into the foreseeable future and, uh, have up to ninety, uh, employable workers, uh, into the job force every year on that. Um, the students, uh, will leave the, uh, the program, the successful students with, uh, they'll have earned a stipend, which will help, uh, them offset the cost of their education. The courses can also be eligible for financial aid and BA benefits perhaps, uh, if, uh, the students qualify for those sorts of things. And, uh, the stipend, uh, they'll earn in the afternoon while they're working on the job site. Um, then they'll also, uh, keep their tool belt. We're going to set them up with a basic carpenter tool belt with, uh, hammer and pliers and speed square and the things that you normally have on your tool belt, uh, about three hundred and fifty dollars worth of tools. The idea is when they graduate from the program, they're ready to get a job, they're ready to step onto the job site with the tools that they need, uh, and the idea of how to use those tools, uh, to be a better employee and to help with the, uh, boom in construction that we know is going to be happening in Trinidad as all of these different activities happen. We, uh, also hope, uh, in addition to, we need students, uh, we can make ninety workers a year in this, and, uh, possibilities for expansion are limited only by our, uh, imagination as we go. But we also need, uh, we need the contractors to, uh, work with us and help us place these students in the jo- in the workforce when they're finished. So that's kind of what we're doing. Uh, we're really excited to have the, uh, the funding. As Dr. Epper said, we're the first of the community colleges to, uh, have a program in place and be able to get this started, and we're excited to be able to help Trinidad, uh, as we move forward. Okay, thank you, Dr. Epper and Keith. Appreciate that. Um, so we've been at it for a little over two and a half hours. Um, I'm not sure, there were a few comments that came through, and some, uh, some comments were answered, uh, some questions were answered, but I would open it up, there were several, uh, developers in there that, uh, mentioned their projects. That's, that's great. We're, uh, we can't wait, uh, just, uh, we're here at the city, hopefully, um, some of these, uh, presentations helped, uh, sparked some, some ideas, um. Again, uh, contact the city, we'll, we'll work with you, uh, as best we can, but, um, I don't know if there's any, anyone who wants to, uh, make any comments or have any questions, we'll open it up.
Yeah, hi Mayor, this is Ernesto Ran out of Denver, Colorado. Just wanted to ask, are they doing any rezoning? Are they, are they zoning land that can be used for townhouse projects? Uh, are you guys doing anything about the lot size? Are, are they being proactive on the zoning? And is there new, is there new land being allotted, uh, you know, for new development?
So, uh, Mayor, I'll take that, uh, this is my case.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, I maybe I'm asking the wrong question the whole time.
That's all right, no, no problem. I would say that, uh, we do have areas that, uh, that, that have, uh, been zoned, uh, for building, um, a couple of failed developments that are out there with, with utility infrastructure partially in or almost in. Um, what I would suggest is if, if a developer is wanting to build townhomes and such, that they, they, you know, come to the city, let's, let's sit down and talk about what areas. Um, we're not expanding our city limits right now, um, I, but if, if that's an opportunity that exists, we will work with whoever to kind of, uh, work through that zoning. We're definitely not, not Denver. We're a little rural community, and, uh, we have some opportunities within city limits, um, that can be, uh, you know, there, there's some high-density residential, there's some low-density residential, there's some land unit developments. We can, you know, hopefully work through and, and make the, um, the, uh, property work for the developer, so.
Yes, sir, well, thank you. Yes, sir, that answers my question. So I, I'm, I'm just a realtor out of Denver, but I've done a lot of development deals, uh, in Denver metro, and then I also see the struggle, you know, I'm, I'm actually doing a development project myself in Lakewood right now. So we're basically, you know, two mile, two miles away from where development is easy, and it's very difficult, so Lakewood just has a different stance on development. So it really depends on the city's stance and how they embrace, uh, the developers as to whether or not people want to build there, so. Yeah, maybe, maybe I'll bring some developers down and come talk to you in there.
Fantastic, thanks for that. Um, I see, uh, Glenn Multer has his hand raised, and then Jill. Hold on, I'll, Glenn? You're muted, can't hear you.
Okay, I didn't want anybody to hear me. I just wanna, uh, thank everybody, it was a very, uh, very informative, uh, 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 meeting today, uh, we need to keep up the talk, uh, a lot of information out there. Uh, Mike, you know, you know me, all our lives, but the biggest problem I see is I've, I've brought in investors in here, is, and I was wondering if there, there's any indication that the, the city and the, or if there's any, uh, public and, and private funding, uh, Ernest, Ernesto, the one that was talking to you earlier, I, I invited him on here because I knew he would have some input on some of this stuff, but, uh, for somebody to put the infrastructure in down here in Trinidad, we're not Denver, and the cost per lot would not help us fit, fit it in, uh, for affordable homes. And that is one of the biggest ob- obstacles when we run numbers, is the per lot price is putting us out, out of range for affordable homes where, you know, the homes would have to be three hundred plus out there, and that's not gonna work for what you guys are, are talking about. Is there, is there government monies out there to help the city or grants to help get some of this infrastructure run in some of these places?
So I don't have the, the real answer for you, but I will say this, that, uh, these agencies that were, uh, we've talked to, have been, uh, that presented, I've been talking to them, and I think there's opportunity out there to try and figure, figure it out. Um, the city council is also forward-thinking in, uh, using some of the marijuana funds toward, uh, building incentives. We, we haven't formulated quite yet how, how we want to go forward with that, but that's a conversation starter right there, you know, and how we can utilize some of that funding possibly. Uh, it's gonna take, uh, a policy procedure that council will pass, so, um, those discussions will be ongoing, so, uh, thank you for that, Glenn. I saw that Jill, um, Jill Jay had her hand up.
Thank you, hello, um, I'm Gray, in here in San Francisco. Um, this is, uh, Mayor, quickly.
Jill, you, you're, can you speak up? We can barely.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
I'm like an ad, can you hear me now? Um, anyway, I wanted to dovetail onto that on Ozone, that I had done some, uh, in, in investment seminar in conjunction with Dana Crawford and another, it's about for, um, Trinidad, and just a little back, uh, thirty-plus years in entitlement and also, uh, something I wanted to mention to, to just an overall conversation is that the 1031, uh, tax exchanges can be dovetailed into the Ozone, that can make it even more, uh, attractive. Um, it means to look at it now, that you can roll a 1031 exchange, um, into there, it can give you even use, perhaps a fifteen years of that money before rolling into an Ozone and then a ten-year back. There's a lot of people currently rolling out of 1031 that do not have a good place to go and look for investment right now because of the current marketplace. This could make it an even more attractive area to be speaking about and drawing those people into these areas in Trinidad that I would love to further explore with somebody, you know, other than at this time period today. I wanted to also, if I may, um, just emphasize, because I think that, um, it's, it's not understood enough, is that, um, when Melissa had mentioned about the, um, valuations on the Trinidad properties, this is a huge piece of what's true in this pop, problem on people qualifying, getting loans, is because the way that they've changed their structure, they're now required to use a large pool of, of vehicles instead of somebody who has that, this piece in the area, so they could be sending down someone from Denver to see in a valuation on a rural area or an area in Trinidad, if you have to understand the marketplace, it's not properly, um, evaluated, and makes it very difficult to qualify the loans and other things. So, um, there's several areas that I think that were touched on today, that really there's a lot of room for a lot more discussion on some of these, um, on, on some of these areas, um, because we did cover a lot today on that, and even the, you know, correlation between in Trinidad and, and, and job, and job, and, 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 uh, a year in Trinidad. So thank you again for, um, for all that you have brought today, really appreciated. Uh, um, please, please.
Thank you for that, Jill. Um, it was kind of muted, we heard, I heard, uh, some of that, but I would encourage you to contact City Hall and, uh, and get us the information that you spoke of, and, and this is, this is an ongoing discussion, so I appreciate you adding, uh, that. Um, Mike, Landys, I see you have your hand up, and your partner.
Yes, my partner in crime here has joined me again. Um, I, I just wanted to quickly weigh in on what I think I heard from Jill, which was that she talked a little bit about how, how the Opportunities Zone Program can be layered with the 1031 like on exchange. Um, so for, gotcha Jill, so for, uh, commercial brokers or developers on this call, it's just worth noting that the Opportunities Zone Program i- is a very flexible incentive, it can by and large be layered with almost any other state-based or federal program. Um, and it, it, it does interact well with, with folks who are, who are working with the 1031 exchange to complete a commercial deal. So that's just, uh, I just wanted to reinforce what, what Jill was saying there, and thanks for bringing that up, Jill, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So I, um.
Mr. Mayor, may I just make, may I just make one last comment? Then, I, I've gotta go, but.
Yep.
So I, you've been struggling in Denver for a long time, I mean, average price of a house now is over six hundred thousand dollars now. I believe the answer is density, so the higher the density you go, uh, but, but people don't like change, right? People don't like growth, they don't like the townhouse projects, they don't like developers, really. Uh, so, but, but areas that have embraced those people, I mean, i- if you embrace density, it's very helpful to, uh, to bring the prices down. You need to build as many units as possible, uh, but it's a fine line, right? You want, you want balanced growth, nice growth, uh, but you, you don't want too much change. So that, that's all I wanted to say, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you for that, I, I know that, uh, we're gonna have more conversations to come based on all, all I, I'm hearing, so, um. With that, I, uh, Mayor, I think that I will turn it over to you.
Michael, can I have one minute before you turn it over?
You bet.
Thank you, this is Diane Santa Stephen with City View Heights Development, and thank you to the city council for having this meeting, it's very well appreciated. I just wanted to share real briefly, I know it's late, um, what we've been doing at City View Heights. I have been in touch with a number of different developers and investors who are looking at coming to Trinidad. We haven't gotten our numbers down low enough yet to be able to make that work, but currently we are looking at homes approximately between two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, that seems to be the lowest we've been able to do. City View Heights has not increased the building sites, I've left the lots the same prices as they've been for several years. And in addition to that, we also have two point nine-nine acres that is already zoned for multifamily residential, low destiny, and if need be, I think, I already spoke to you, Mike, about the possibility of increasing that to medium destiny. So we are moving on rental units as well. Um, I don't have enough information to share any more detail at this point. I do believe two of the developers are online today, so I'm hoping they got the information they needed. I did invite them to this meeting, and I do know for a fact one was here. I believe the other one's here too. So this has been very informative, I do wanna let you know we're not just sitting idle, there's been a lot going on behind the scenes, and I will keep you informed as soon as I have more information, but thank you again. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Stephen. Um, Mayor, uh, big thanks to all who presented, all of who took the time this afternoon to join us and, and, um, I turn it over to you.
Okay, uh, first of all, I wanted to say, uh, just as well, uh, thank, uh, everyone who participated in tonight, it looks like we had a one point eighty-seven participants, so there is, uh, a lot of interest that has been shown in tonight's presentations. Uh, I wanted to thank the people from, you know, CHAFA and, uh, OEDIT and DOLA for that information, and it sounds like... and it sounds like there is somebody out there to help developers. You know, this tonight is just a first step. Like I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, that we'll probably need to have more meetings because we'll take, start, take it to the nuts and bolts in the next few meetings that we'll have. So, you know, the next meeting, of course, will be determined by Mr. Valentine and his staff and how it's going to be, how we'll come together will be discussed and how it needs to be discussed so that we can keep this thing moving in the right direction. I guess the biggest thing is, you know, we have, like Mr. Duran says, is a developer and Mrs. Santa Stephen, they're developers. The big thing that we need to have down here are people who are willing to come down and besides the local contractors, there's just maybe a couple of local contractors that have the capacity to actually, you know, to pound the ales. So that's what we need, is somebody that will be able to come down and bring their labor force if necessary, or work with the local labor force to erect these buildings, whether it's single-family homes or if it's multi-housing. So like I said, I wanted to thank everyone for the information tonight. There's a lot of information to dissect, and at this point in time, I wanted to say thank you again, and hopefully that when we pull the next meeting together, we'll have the same number of participants and have some additional information and comment. And thanks again for tonight, and we'll be seeing you again.
Thank you.
Good night.